I would like to call the school board business meeting for September 28th. Barb, would you please note the role?
Certainly. Board Chair Heppner.
Here.
Vice Chair Lachlan.
Here.
Treasurer Lehman.
Here.
Clerk Pelletier.
Here.
Director Pearson.
Here.
Director Patachek.
Here.
Director Stipland.
Here.
You have Quirb.
Thank you. Please stand for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our district mission statement. Jennifer?
The mission of Stillwater Area Public Schools in partnership with students, family, and community is to develop curious individuals who are active and engaged leaders in an ever-changing world by challenging all students as they travel along their personalized learning pathways.
Thank you. And our board goal, Sarah?
As board members, we are morally and legally responsible for an equitable and quality education for each and every student in our district. As board members, we ensure decisions are made in the interest of all students E21 and for future generations impacted by our actions. We partner with administration to assure all students are provided equitable opportunities to reach their maximum potential. We participate in efforts that support student and community engagement. We direct our district efforts to develop a balanced budget for 2017 and 18, and we exercise effective self-governance.
Thank you. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thanks. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Pose. Thank you. And the superintendent's report.
Thank you. This evening, I'll address, first of all, some of the speakers from the September 14th, 2017 meeting. One of the speakers who shared with us Kristi Mack and some concerns about our GATE program. And those concerns were, one, concerned with the isolation of GATE students in middle school without peers. And the question was, could they be integrated with other classes? The GATE program is planning to include students in BizTown, StarLab, and their track and field days. So the social things that some of the students are engaged in, they will be integrated with other students. Another question was, why aren't third graders part of the GATE program? GATE design, the design team, made an intentional decision to keep the program at fourth grade upon reviewing data. Our historical data showed that the COGAD assessment, which is given to our second graders, weren't representing our students' ability accurately, and that when students were reassessed in third grade, many more of our students qualified for GATE. We now universally screen all third grade students. Another question was, why are fifth grade students in middle school fayette? Fifth and sixth grade students were also combined at Oak Park in the past for physical education, so this isn't something new. A male and a female adult provide supervision in the locker room and with students' personalized needs for whatever they need. So that portion is not new from the past GATE program. Another concern was why no playground is currently at Stillwater Middle School for GATE students, and that the Withrow Playground, why could that have not been used at Stillwater Middle? Additional PE and recess equipment is currently being ordered after another inventory and requesting for ordering necessary equipment. Additional items are being included, including foam fort building kits, ladder golf, long jenga, beanbag tosses, tetherball, and foursquare at the recommendation of the students. And then finally, there was a request to have a board member serve as a liaison to GATE, and currently, school board members do not serve as liaisons within the district. In addition to that, a few more points about the GATE program. We mentioned that we have 16 new students in the program from out of district. Every GATE fourth and fifth grader has their own Lego kit. GATE has now a personalized library for the students. Many of you have seen the GATE spaces, and they're developing a reading buddy program with GATE students and the early childhood families and students. A second speaker was Janelle Jamelka, and Janelle's concerns were around policy within the district, needing to have policy updates that follow state regulations. Dr. George Nolan met with Janelle and discussed her concerns that she had presented at open forum. We opened up the district website with her and went over district policies and advised her and looked more closely at the policies that she had concerns, and we've talked about updating policies here in the work of our policy working group. The bullying policy on the website was updated in 2015. We also shared with her the current equity work that staff is receiving currently through EMed and the intentional planning we have with students and staff. We're having an additional meeting with her next week. Those are the open forum concerns that I was asked to address. Many other things on the report for superintendent. One of the things that we, I wanted to give some more clarity, we've had questions about transportation, and some folks are wondering why the district didn't plan better for transportation needs at the beginning of the year. We did plan, and we knew what our needs were. We met June 9th with Minnesota Central folks about the busing needs and estimated at that time that we would need anywhere from 74 to 77 buses. Then in July, we went back and confirmed that we would need 77. So there was plenty of planning done ahead of time, and we've been smack dab on track for what we needed for additional busing since we started to do the work to determine that a couple of years ago. Special education needs, we've been visiting all of the schools and going out and visiting with staff and learning about what the concerns are and things, the successes and things that they're challenged with. And right now, special education needs are high. We have many students who are experiencing trauma and dysregulation, and that really has put a stress on our systems, especially the students who have higher needs. So our administrative team, Paul Lee, Caroline Ziskin-John, for our meeting with schools to determine the changes in support and the training that we need for our staff, because we know that it's both of those things. We met with the PTO presidents this last Monday, and they came together to determine topics for the year that they'd like to learn more about and have conversations with. And then Chris Freykoals also gave them some tips on using Facebook pages to reach out, because all of our PTOs are looking for more volunteers. So for those people out in the community who might be interested, we would love to have you volunteer. I also attended the Immersion Open House, as I know several board members did also. It was very well-attended, and we have our two kindergarten classes at Lake Elmer Elementary up and running, and things are going well with Immersion. It was an exciting evening, and there's a lot of emotion and happiness from the group who attended that evening. We had another mental health conversation with, in partnership with Washington County over at Oakland last week, and that was Tuesday evening. We shared the community conversations, the themes that came forward from the mental health concerns, and then we shared what we're doing as a district, because one of the things we heard from the community that came is, what are we doing as a school district to support the needs? And so we shared those. And then we decided to meet and wait until November 14th to meet again and have tasks, work groups start working on different themes that they were interested in. We would love to have more people. We're meeting again November 14th at 6:00, and we're determining what spot we need depending on how many people, but we'd love to have more folks with us for that. On Monday of last week, I had the superintendent advisory group, and that group came together and again gave us feedback on what topics they'd like to learn more about this year, topics of concern, and so we're compiling that, and we'll share that with the group. That same evening, we had the academic awards, which a few of our students here were at, and we had 100 more students this year than in the past receiving academic awards, which is exciting. Lisa Schaefer, Dr. Lisa Schaefer, is a neuro researcher, and she went to Stonebridge. And so she's a Stonebridge alum, and she came and spoke to the students and had an inspiring message about really pursuing their passions and making that their life's work. So that was an exciting evening for the students and the families who attended. Thank you.
Thank you. We have some introductory items, and the first is the student report, and I'll turn it over to Annabelle, and you can introduce our guest when we get there.
Perfect. My name is Annabelle Gregg, and I'm one of the student body presidents at the high school. And my announcements will start off with this. Today at the high school, the first official day of flex time was kicked off. This 40-minute block of time in between third and fourth hour gives students the ability to flex, or in other words, use the time for themselves. Whether they decide to seek academic support, attend yoga class, or even learn to knit, the time is theirs. Today, I was even able to complete the majority of my homework during my 40 minutes of time. If a student needs to make up a test but takes the bus to and from school, this acts as a great way for them to have the same academic offerings as students that drive themselves. The inaugural day of flex time was defined by a little bit of craziness and confusion, but I remain hopeful for the continuation of the program. I have heard nothing other than positive reviews from the students that I have spoken with. I recommend you come see Flex Time in action, and you can expect updates from me in the future regarding it. Our music department has been working hard on refining their work to be ready for the Kaleidoscope concert on Monday, October 30th at 6:30 PM and 8:00 PM, and the Fall Choral Festival at St. Andrews Church on November 2nd at 8:00 PM. Stillwater Middle School has the Unity Day 5K to look forward to on Wednesday, October 25th. On September 12th, Oakland Middle School completed the Courage Retreat, which encouraged students to speak up and demand kindness to promote a peaceful school environment. First graders at Lily Lake Elementary began classroom stations this week and have been working especially hard on proper handwriting. Elementary schools across the district have entered into the swing of things and have field trips and lots of exciting things to look forward to this fall. Overall, the cooler days of fall have cemented the fact that the school year has truly begun, and patterns of positive behavior and academic success have been welcomed as kindly as the crisp fall days. And our next speaker is Anna Wertz, who is subbing for Ava Jokanovic, and she is the treasurer of student council.
Hi, my name is Anna Wertz, and I'm a junior on student council at Stillwater High School. Here is an update on some of the sporting events at the high school. This afternoon, the girls tennis teams have matches at White Bear Lake. Girls Cross Country has another meet tonight after placing first at the Malacca Meet last weekend. The JV and varsity volleyball teams have matches at Park High School, and the boys and girls soccer teams both have games at Moundsview. Tomorrow, our football team takes on Moundsview after their win against White Bear Lake last weekend. And this upcoming weekend and next week hold many exciting matches, games, and meets that are crucial to the ponies, as section games are just around the corner. Thank you.
Thank you. Second introductory item is the district recognition. I'll turn it back to the superintendent for that.
All right, thank you. This evening, I'd like to introduce Rachel Larson. She's the Director of Learning and Innovation, and Rachel, in the past, has been our Director of Personalized Learning. And so she's switched positions, and this evening, she's going to share with us more about the Web and Link Crews. And if you remember, in the past, we shared that we're very grateful for the partnership plan, which helped fund the training for our teachers and staff for this. Thank you, Rachel.
We have a great group of us tonight. Superintendent Pontrelli, Board Chair Heppner, members of the board, it is my privilege to be standing here with you tonight and recognizing two significant programs that we have implemented this year in the district, that it's all about taking care of one another. It's about how do we make sure that our students that come into our middle schools and our high school help take care of one another? How do they help with student mentorship, student leadership, belonging, connectedness, finding the locker, knowing where to go, who to ask, how to do all those things that run through our minds when any of us make any transition? And one thing that's really exciting, and Superintendent Pontrelli recognized that this also happened through the support of the partnership plan, but I also want to recognize Superintendent Pontrelli's leadership and Dr. Bob McDowell as well. When I came into this district five years ago, the community spoke loud and clear in the Bridge to Excellence that they wanted the support of taking care of our kids. And two things that I was able to try to support was Web and Link, and we couldn't make it happen. And we are now making it happen through the support from a community perspective and a district leadership perspective. So all of these fine leaders who are with us tonight, representing the best of supporting one another in student settings, is a really near and dear thing for what we provide for our kids. So just a quick overview of Web and Link Crew. Web stands for Where Everyone Belongs, and it's a transition program helping support students to get familiar with one another, engage with student mentor leaders, and help transition into middle school. And then Link Crew is the high school program of that. So it's the upperclassmen mentor leaders that help support the younger students. And the caveat with that is, we also have student coaches, or excuse me, teacher coaches that help coach and build the leadership capacity of many of our students, both at the middle school and at the high school, to help support one another. So I am thrilled to introduce and recognize Matt Kraft. Matt Kraft is an assistant principal at the high school, and he has been pivotal in leading the effort with other coaches who are here as well, and he'll introduce them and then the students.
Thank you, Dr. Larson. It's an absolute privilege to be able to support these great people here. We have six advisors at the high school level and 133 junior and senior leaders that really incorporate an entire ninth-grade transition program. I'm going to step back, and I'm going to allow them to introduce themselves, and then I'd also want to introduce three advisors that were not able to be here tonight. And then absolutely, if you have questions about Link Crew, these would be the great people to talk to.
I'm Katie Bray. I'm an advisor.
I'm Rose Whitcomb. I'm a student leader.
I'm Tanu Dulee. I'm a student leader, also a senior.
Erin Nickelby. I'm one of the advisors.
Amy Hoffman. One of the last advisors.
And not with us tonight, Kathy Meyer, who's a ninth-grade teacher, math teacher, Dennis Ryan, who teaches ninth-grade English, and Becky Skogan, who teaches Spanish. And that kind of rounds out the high school team.
And 138.
And 130-some more leaders.
Can I ask a question? Can we hear from the students? What has been a highlight for you in doing this?
I really enjoyed being able to get to know some of the underclassmen that are now in our school, since it's been such a big transition year with them all coming in for the first time. It's been really good to get to know them and like see familiar faces when there's however many kids at the big school that we have, so.
Yeah, I also like what Rose said. I just like bonding with them, getting to know them, and just if they, like be a mentor to them. And also, like a story I heard during like homecoming week, I heard like one of my friends said, "Oh, I got to pick out my freshman's homecoming dress for the dance." And I was like, "Oh, my gosh, that is so cute." That made my day, so.
Thank you. Something else that the adult advisors and Matt Kraft have led is locker bases. And this is phenomenal. They took, and the student leaders agreed to this, the upperclassmen agreed to this, to have their lockers alongside the students that they mentor coming in, so their lockers are assigned in the same region so that they can interact with them in between classes and have those touch base points. And I've heard some keep candy in their locker that fits the wellness policy. But it's just a great way to just always be present and there when you need that person to just connect with and help get saved in that moment of stress when you're transitioning or just with a question you have. So thank you for your leadership. It's been phenomenal.
Rachel, how do you see this going forward? This program?
Yeah, it's been a great success, so it will stay. We have been hearing so much from parents, from students, from teachers and staff that we've needed this, our kids have needed this. And especially during this year, in a time of a lot of transition, it's been super helpful. And the teacher leaders and the administration at the sites have done incredible work preparing and planning, and many hours, preparing activities to help the students acclimate, and then also assessing what it is next year we'd want to do differently and how we'd want to structure things. And they also have touch points during the year. So it's not just at the beginning of the year that they help transition, but it's activities and connections deliberately scheduled. And I believe flex time, too, correct? Yep?
They'll be visiting adult advocate rooms, Welcome Wednesdays. We have things planned coming up for the football game.
Other activities, trying to get, not only trying to acclimate the freshmen with, in a small group of awesome, amazing juniors and seniors, but to also get them involved. So we're going to encourage, you know, we've got the theater production coming up, meet your upperclassmen there. We've got, you know, end-of-season sporting events that are coming up, and we've got concerts. So things that will try and promote that community, sense of community for our all grades, getting our upperclassmen there, but then also saying, "Hey, come with me, come meet me." So it's a really cool opportunity.
Social academic change also.
So it really is student-driven and teacher-driven, which gets to the heart of what we do.
Thank you all for being here tonight. Always, my favorite part of the board meeting is when we can hear our student voice, and I just have an invitation to all students here, that if you go on our district website and you go into the tab where it says "School District," and you'll find the school board page, and there's a link there that will, one click, and it will be to all seven of us. And I think the more we can center youth and student voice and really hear your experiences would be super valuable. So I invite you to do that. Tanu, I know I'll probably get an email from you tomorrow, so, because that's so important, and that really, really helps to inform our decision-making and just, again, the more we can focus on youth voice. So please don't be shy about doing that.
Great idea. Thank you. Next, we'd like to represent Stillwater Middle School, and Abby Brown has been pivotal in leading the Web program there, and Chris Getchell as well. Unfortunately, Chris Getchell is not able to be with us, so he sends his regards, because he's a passionate advocate for this. But I'd like to welcome Abby Brown and the students with her.
One of the great things about this program is that it gives you flexibility within your own culture, your own school, and having brand-new middle schools, we looked at the opportunity to include seventh graders as well. So the 80 leaders that we have, or 70 leaders that we have as eighth graders at Stillwater Middle School, took time on all day, the first day, to meet with the seventh graders all day, and all day the next day with the sixth graders, so that all students were included. It wasn't done before school, during an orientation. We wanted to make sure that all students were there and were a part of it, and that's how a lot of our activities continue. If Chris Getchell were here tonight, those of you that know Chris, you know his energy, but you may not know that he is a Y guy. YMCA is in his core and has been one of those kind of leaders, so this kind of program is right up his alley. He did all of the leader introductions, did most of the trainings, had that energy that we needed. Two of our advisors now, Emily May, who is also not here, and Mr. Getchell, took on 35 advisory students each, who are all from Web. They're all Web leaders, and their advisories are spent doing some leadership training and also helping the kids get ready for the next activities they're going to do with their seventh graders and their sixth graders. I'm going to let the two that are representing Stillwater Middle School introduce themselves.
I'm Eliza Weston.
I'm Lane Gassler.
And why don't you guys say something to that? Anything you'd love. Yeah, just like the older ones did med training.
One thing that I like a lot about Web is like getting to know the younger class and like seeing familiar faces in the hallway, and I think that's helped the younger kids too.
One thing that I like about Web is it allows me to help other people in the school get used to how the middle school works.
Excellent, thank you. And if you were able to stop by the middle school when this was in session, it was phenomenal. The eighth-grade students, two of them here tonight, were leading the sixth and seventh grade students in activity, so the leadership skill set was incredible at such a young age. I'd also like to recognize Nick Ardito. He's also a Web, he's also a Web adult advisor. So now on to Oakland Middle School. So please welcome Heather Gates and her student representatives.
I'm here tonight representing the Oakland Middle School Web coordinators and leaders. Myself and my counseling partner Julie Cole were trained, as well as Lancer Lumbee and Joel Raditz and administrator Kyle Kane. So that's our kind of leadership team at Oakland Middle School. We are so thankful for the support that the school board has shown for this transition program as our district moves into this new structure with middle school and a four-year high school. So thank you very much, and we're very grateful for the partnership plan, for the funding to support this program. I think the thing that I really wanted to emphasize, and I kind of prepped my leaders here, are two things. We're not, number one, we're supporting the kids that are transitioning. So our sixth graders are feeling very supported as they move into this new adventure of middle school. But also, our eighth graders are developing leadership skills and becoming such a role model in our building and creating a wonderful, positive culture. And I have Trent Tillot and Jada Herman here, and they'd both like to spend a few moments talking to you about their perspective. Trent?
Hi, I'm Trent Tillot. I'm from Oakland Middle School now, not junior high anymore. And I'm going to hear, I'm here to talk to you about how we help the sixth graders feel welcomed and safe coming into Oakland Junior. There it is again, Oakland Middle School. So the first way that we help them feel welcome, we brought them into our small groups. So we bring them into small groups with people that they don't know. So they have to make new connections, and they have to learn about new people. And what I think is great about it is, like I said, they're making new friends, and there's just a ton of people that you don't hang around with the same groups anymore. You're like with different people, sitting at lunch with different people, and learning about different people's values and what they do for, like what they do every day. And then the second thing that we do is we offer like a year-long support. So one thing that me and Jada and our advisory did was we made these personal dance invitations to the school dance. So we kind of customized them to their likings, and we gave them to them in another small group reading we did, I think, two weeks ago. So we did that. And then my third and final thing is that I'd like to share a story with you about the sixth grader. So I was walking to art one day, and I had saw the sixth grader, and he was like all confused, so I was like, "Ooh, I better help him." And I went up to him, and I said, "Are you lost?" And he said, "Yes." And he couldn't find the library, and I didn't want him to be late, but I was going to be late to my class, so I was like, "Okay, I'll walk you down." So I took him down to the library, and I brought him inside, and then, what's our library's?
Media Center.
The media center? And I brought him there, and then I went to art, and my art teacher was very forgiving. He knew. The reason I wanted to share that story is because it may be different for me to come up here and talk about how Web is, but that's a real-life situation of how Web has helped somebody. And it's a great relationship for me, because now he can come to me again, like I'm not a big scary eighth grader. He thinks that I'm nice, and I can help him through whatever he needs to do. So that's all I have.
And then Jada would like to come and tell you a little bit about what it's meant for the eighth-grade leaders to be part of the Web program.
Hi, I'm Jada. I'm in eighth grade, and I'm from Oakland Middle School. And I'm here to talk about how Web affects eighth-grade leaders. One way that it affected me was getting out of my comfort zone. One way that helped me was making new friends with the eighth-grade leaders. Before this Web started, I really didn't know Trent that well, and now, since we've kind of gotten to know each other better, I know him a lot better, and I feel comfortable talking to him. Another way that helped me was learning how to lead a group all by myself, because all the Web leaders probably came into the training thinking that they were going to be with one of their friends, helping in a small group, but we really had to be on our own managing like eight to 10 sixth graders, and we didn't know how they were going to react. And then another way of getting out of my comfort zone was empowering to help others. I had this one kid, and here's my story. I had this one kid who just, at an assembly, he just didn't, he was really shy, and he was like away from everyone else. He didn't want to be with the group. So I went over to talk to him, and he really didn't, he didn't want to talk, so I sat down next to him, and I was trying to talk to him, but he wouldn't. And so I brought up like animals, and he actually like started talking to me about his pets. And a little later, we were playing this game as a large group, and it was a game where we, if it was, if it related to us, we had to walk across on the other side of the circle. So I got up, and it didn't relate to him, so I had to go away from him. But when something that like was related to him, he got up and moved by himself, and he didn't need any help. And then a little later- later that day, I found out he was in my small group. And I really like, he really was engaged in it and he was cooperating. And by the end of the day, he was doing stuff all on his own. And I just felt really like happy that I got him like more out of his comfort zone. So that's what I taught, that's, that's it.
Here's to taking care of one another. So thank you, teacher leaders and student leaders. You make an incredible difference.
Thanks to all the students. And please pass the word on to your classmates as well. I think your willingness to step out of your comfort zone to be leaders and help establish your community is fantastic. Thanks to the teacher leaders for the job that you do. And thanks, as many people have said, to the partnership for helping fund this incredibly valuable program as well. It's a great step forward for our district. Got speakers for open forum and I'll read the prologue. Stillwater Area School District welcomes input from citizens as community involvement fosters better decision-making and improved learning experiences for all students. While comments and questions are welcome during open forum, law prohibits the board from discussing concerns about individual employees or students in a public meeting. We will stop the proceedings immediately if employee or student privacy issues are raised and direct the speaker to forward comments regarding individual employees or students to the superintendent. Because we are modeling civil discourse for our community, speakers must present their testimony in a respectful manner. Bulgarity, character attacks, malice, or specific complaints identifying staff or students by name or implication will not be permitted. The board will not deliberate, discuss, or engage in conversation with speakers during open forum. However, the board will ask administration to review concerns presented. Our first speaker is Jessica Kuslich. I'm hoping I'm not hurting that too much. Your name and address as you start.
Jessica Kuslich, 11920 Partridge Road Court North in Stillwater. And then I just talk?
Yeah.
Okay. I apologize. My thoughts are not quite as prepared as I would have intended. I was kind of reviewing what I wanted to say this morning before my workday officially started. And I was interrupted by a phone call from the CEO of my company before my official work hours. And because I take seriously the, my accountability to the people who've put me in my position, I dropped what I was doing and I got to work. So I will be brief, but a little bit off the cuff. The purpose of my comments tonight are simply to urge the board members to vote against any increase in this proposed levy that's going to be discussed tonight. I don't know if a zero percent increase is even an option at this point, but if it is, I would urge you to vote for that versus the maximum that is being requested. And then further to urge you to vote against moving forward the purchase of land for this bus garage location that is set to cost about twice what is budgeted and is not zoned for the purposes with which, for which you intend to use it. I think it's an irresponsible use of tax dollars to build some, to plan to build something on land that is not designed for that use. So those are my opinions. I wanted to share them and urge you to listen to the members of this district. I'm a taxpayer and a parent in the school district. And I think that really it's time for us to live within our budgeted means. We're no longer afraid of the cuts that are going to be threatened if we don't increase, increase these budget items. I think that this board has shown us that they are consistently not accountable to the promises that were made to the taxpayers. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carl Blondin.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Superintendent Pontrelli, my name's Carl Blondin. I live on Sunrise Avenue in Stillwater. As you know, I've often spoken in importance of putting academics first. I'm going to disagree with the last speaker. I think it is imperative that capital funds be used to purchase a bus facility so money does not come out of the annual budget for that purpose of keeping buses somewhere. We need to spend that money on teachers. We need to make decisions that put academics first. Failure to make a prudent capital investment to free up money to put teachers in the classroom harms all of our The Greeks told us that prudence is the mother of all virtue. We need to be prudent in the use of our resources. And part of that is understanding how we can use the capital fund to free up money for the annual budget. It is absolutely irresponsible to not make an investment that will guarantee another teacher and a half or two teachers Going back to the issue of prudence, like most taxpayers, I work. All taxpayers in this district work very hard. We expect you to be prudent with the use of our money. That means providing opportunities for all students, putting the classroom first. I'm very pleased with the changes in the last two or three years in this district. I can say unequivocally that in the quarter century or so, since I've moved to Stillwater, this is the first time we've had a superintendent who puts the classroom first. Others tried. Mrs. Pontrelli gets it done. As you know, I've been somewhat of a critic of spending on sports. I would like the board to look at the subsidy that we provide hockey parents. It's almost ninety thousand dollars a year. What would the reaction of the hockey parents be if there was no subsidy for them and we were spending ninety thousand dollars a year on the French club to send them over to Paris for two weeks in the summer? Who are we to pick and choose the winners when it comes to subsidies for activities? No pun intended, but the boosters need to pony up some more money. The taxpayers should not be paying to subsidize a sports academy. That is a transfer of wealth from the taxpayers to the upper-middle class. And that ties into the next issue I wanted to address was racism. By subsidizing activities that are primarily aimed at white, upper-middle class students, you're taking money out of the classroom to help students of color, recent immigrants, and people without as much money. It's racist. It's classist. It's time to remember that the most important issue we face is systemic racism, our attitudes, the structures we have in place. And I want to thank the superintendent and Mr. McDowell for the efforts they have made. I've seen racism hurt one I love. It drove someone I love from the schools. That must end. We cannot tolerate it. America's a lot better place than when I was born. The country's improving. But we're not where we need to be. We, as a district, must take the lead in providing equal opportunity. And that's only possible if you put academics first. Thank you.
Thank you. Our third speaker is Eric Anderson.
My name's Eric Anderson. I live at 5511 Oak Green Place, Oak Park Heights. And I'm addressing the board tonight as a parent, community member, and employee in our district. And the macro-level topic is civil discourse and public service and my appreciation for your public service. At the last open forum, one of the speakers called for the resignation of our Board of Education's Chair and Vice Chair. And although I respect that speaker's right to an opinion, I'm here to offer a divergent perspective. Vice Chair Paula O'Loughlin has been immersed in supporting all of our students and their families in our district for more than a decade. She began as a highly competent substitute teacher in our district, moved to working with our cross-district classroom partnerships with St. Paul Public Schools, was a key player and innovator in bringing AVID, advancement via individual determination, into our district, served as a co-teacher during its inception, and as its campus coordinator. She's served on countless committees and obviously is currently the vice chair and the first person of color to serve on our board in over a hundred years. For that, I'm grateful. In short, educator is an integral part of Paula O'Loughlin's core identity. She has the unique ability to recognize the cultural and learning strengths of the students and families that she serves and always finds creative and innovative ways to authentically collaborate with them. To say that Paula O'Loughlin is a change-maker in this community is an understatement. And I'm grateful for her important contributions to the school district as we continue the process. And this is important because we have a choice to make of learning and moving forward together. Thank you, Paula. Board Chair Hepner also has educator oozing out of every pore of his being. He devoted thirty-six years to the teaching profession and thirty-two years to teaching high school English at Stillwater High School. He and his wife Donna, a former teacher at Lake Elmo Elementary, and I still see her there all the time, are the parents of two children, both graduates of Stillwater Area Public Schools, and both are whom part of the next generation of educators. He spent thirty-five years coaching baseball and twenty years of coaching girls' basketball. Educators like George don't retire. They transition. And thus, George was elected to and has served on our Board of Education since 2007. And when I started in the school district in 1998, George was one of the mentors that kept me in the game. So thank you. I'm grateful for his important contributions to our school district over the past four decades. And as we continue the process of, again, learning and moving forward together, thank you, George.
Our consent agenda tonight, minutes of the September fourteenth, 2017 school board meeting, the disbursement register, September seventh through the twentieth, 2017, the Human Resources Personnel Report, and approval of a field trip for one advisor, eight chaperones, and seventy-four students of the Stillwater Area High School Concert Orchestra to travel to St. Louis, Missouri, March eighth through the eleventh of 2018. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Our report this evening is a staffing update, and I'll turn it over to Superintendent Pontrelli for that.
Thank you. Good evening. Board members, all of you received a staffing update with a lot of detail. The detail that you had were spreadsheets that had staffing positions, employee groups, hiring timelines, rationale, and funding sources for the positions that have been new due to the transitions that we've had within the school district in the coming year. I'm going to give you a little bit more specific information about what those positions look like. First of all, with the grade reconfiguration, all of you know that at preschool, at the elementary, we have preschool in every school. And so we have seven additional preschool teachers than we have had in the past. And with that, we have four pre-K educational assistants. Once again, preschool is funded through community education and not out of the general fund. We also, at the middle school, have added last year, an assistant principal to Stillwater Junior High. That was a one-year-only position. We also have added student engagement specialist. Student engagement specialists focus on world's best workforce strategies within the middle school and are part of the middle school FTE. But it is a position that's different than has been in the past. We also have added sixth-grade athletic coaches to the tune of six students, or six coaches, due to the increase in students wanting to be part of middle school athletics, which is exciting. And then you saw our web advisors here this evening. We have additional two web advisors to the middle school. Looking at the high school, we had a temporary counselor, which was only for the 2016-17 school year. We added bar coordinators and an interventionist for the bar program. And then with the addition of the Pony Activity Center, we have an additional secretary, assistant principal, and counselor. In addition, we have link crew advisors, two of them, which are similar to the web advisors that you saw this evening. And then for the 2017-18 year only, we have an activities clerk. This is due to the increase in more ninth graders and more students at the high school trying to manage athletics and activities for the students. And then finally, in the area of general support, we had a transportation coordinator, which was added for special education and special projects to help with the transition. And we had a temporary enrollment processor that was for one year only. At Spanish immersion, Spanish immersion, we added a paraprofessional. And the reasoning behind this is whenever you have an immersion program, you usually start with higher numbers than typical. And at the kindergarten level, having higher numbers, there's a higher need. And so the increased enrollment pays for that Spanish immersion paraprofessional. We know that as students progress through immersion, we lose a couple of students. They might move away and the numbers drop. And you can't just easily add other students in unless they've had immersion experience. So we start a little bit higher, accounting for that attrition. In learning and innovation, we, within the budget that we already currently had, we hired a coordinator of learning and innovation. And you've met Melinda. Melinda focuses on assessment and data for students. In the area of special education, we hired an assistant director of student support services. This position was in direct response to our teachers telling us that they needed more support from the district for special education students. That position was paid for by a reduction in special education in another area and re-looking at how that team delivers services. At Oak Park, we've added a secretary for the 2017-18 year only. Once again, we need somebody to help with security and greeting people as they come. And we only have a couple of programs right now at Oak Park. And then we also added a due process secretary. The due process secretary, again, was paid for through special education funds and third-party building. And this due process secretaries, if you remember, their role is to help reduce the amount of paperwork and scheduling for our teachers. And in the past, we didn't have that at the high school. We started at the elementary, we added middle school, and now we have high school. So that's been planned. And then finally, the last piece that you see there is a healthcare supervisor. One of the things that we've also learned from our community and our staff is that our students are coming to us with more medically complex needs and increase in diabetes and severity of diabetes. We wanted somebody who could help with some of those clinical needs. Our staff wanted to have current training. And so Paula McDonald is our new healthcare supervisor helping with that training. And once again, we added that position by reworking our licensed school nurses for health in the healthcare area. With early childhood and community education, we added an early childhood coordinator. She's working with outreach and engagement with our families. And we also added an instructional coach for early childhood. And once again, just a reminder that those positions are paid for through community education funds. For the high school, the high school expanded, as you know, and we had planned for four-point-five positions and we actually needed five-point-five. So you'll see an increase in one custodian for that area. We also added a clerk, substitute coordinator, that's also temporary. That's to help with the startup of the Pony Activity Center and all the memberships and beginning scheduling of that facility. We added a Pony Activity Secretary. We added a Pony Activity Secretary. Security and welcoming the community who comes there is something that's important to us, and so we need to make sure that we have someone at the desk in front of the Pony Activity Center when that facility is open. And then we've also added community education building assistance. We've also added cafeteria employees, and the cafeteria employees and manager have been to help us with Pankalo. You've heard Director Potashik talk about 916 and the new special education facility in the southern part of the metro area over in Woodbury. And our cafeteria employee and manager will be providing food services for Pankalo. And we have a cafeteria trainer who's working with all sites to coordinate. That's our staffing update. Do you have specific questions that you'd like to ask? I would like to add one other thing that I didn't comment on earlier is that with these positions, I think sometimes people get confused and think, well, we passed a bond. The bond should pay for some of those positions. And just a reminder that the bond pays for the facilities, but we, as a school district, need to figure out through operating costs how to pay for these positions. So some of these positions do impact the general fund.
I just have one question. Oh, go ahead, Mike.
Go ahead, Sarah. I can wait.
Okay.
If we try to go through the chair, I think that would make it easier, so I'll have Sarah go for it. Thank you.
Thanks, George. I just have one question regarding the assistant principal at Stillwater Middle School. It's, you said that it was a one-year position only?
Last year.
So we don't have that now?
Correct.
Okay.
Shelley Fernettan is now at the high school.
So did we lose a principal position at that school, or did we?
We lost one, yes.
Well, because we'd added one, right?
Right.
So they've added one for one year, and then they're backed down to two principals?
So they're two just the same as, yep, they're just the same as Oakland.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Mike?
A couple of questions and one comment. One, I really appreciate getting this. I think it helps us understand a lot of things that have occurred, and I know it's a lot of work to put this together, so thank you for doing that. A couple that you mentioned, they're not clear in my head exactly what they do, so just a little further clarification. The student engagement specialist, can you tell me a little bit more about that, what they do? Are they full-time? It's a full-time position?
Yeah, I can tell you a little bit about that, and then if Bob McDowell wants to elaborate, if I need more. The student engagement specialist, when our middle school teams came together to create what they wanted for our middle school program, part of what they knew was important as they looked at aligning middle school programming with the world's best workforce was really to look at how our students are engaged in that wraparound, social, emotional, academic. And so the focus of the two teachers, one in each middle school, is to work on the personalized learning and wraparound services for students. So they're supporting our teams within the middle school with students who might be struggling with either academic, social, emotional-type concerns.
So are they interventionists? Are they counselors? Are they?
You know, they are experienced staff. They aren't formally, don't need a counseling degree, and they aren't necessarily teaching one-on-one. They're supporting the teams. So interventionists typically have a regular schedule where they pull students in. This is kind of a combination of looking what students' needs are, academic and social, and then working with school psychologists, student advocates, that kind of thing, to provide programming.
Okay, so they're kind of part of the support team, is what it sounds like?
Exactly.
Some schools call it a building leadership team or something in terms of student needs. Not quite?
I think it's, I think it's close. I think this is more focused a little bit on, more on the student need versus administrative-type things.
Okay. And then the second question I have, and others may not, but tell me what BAR stands for?
Building Assets and Reducing Risks. So it's a social-emotional program to support students at the high school.
Okay. I get that. Thank you.
I'm glad I remembered that one.
Tom?
On the 916 and the Pankalo, are they paid for by 916?
Correct.
Good.
Paula?
You had mentioned earlier in your update just some of the increasing needs in special ed services. And as we know, and I think, Mike, it might be something that you're talking about later with, that came up in the advocacy tour in terms of the special ed cross-subsidy and just how much of an impact that's having on all of our districts, including ours, I think to the tune of $8 million a year. So how, can you just walk us through some of the thinking that perhaps might occur in terms of how do we, with our limited budget constraints and with the $8 million that we're already spending in the cross-subsidy, how can we reevaluate maybe what our special ed services may look like, just given the financial constraints?
I think the financial constraints are not new. It's just that they're growing. And so that requires us to look really specifically at student needs and how we service. And one of the things that I'd shared is that some of the students we see are coming from high, high levels of trauma or dysregulation, which looks a little bit different. In the past, when we've looked at students with special education needs many times, it's been learning disabilities or emotional behavior disorders, autism, those kind of things. This is something that really is, well, it's traumatic for our kids. And until we can figure out ways to service them, it's going to take a combination of training for our staff. Our staffs ask for ways to learn about strategies to not escalate situations. And then it also is going to cause us to look differently at how we have some crisis teams for our students because we've had those crisis teams, but typically a student might, we might need that within a building a couple of times a week. And now we're having some students who are there two or three at the same time, in the same school, on the same day. And so that causes, you know, the staff to really, stresses our staff, and we can understand why. So we have to look at the systems and then the training.
I was in a meeting earlier today, and someone from White Bear Lake had shared that they got a grant to help train staff with the, around the trauma-induced classroom, kind of maybe a counterpart to responsive classroom in terms of educator training and, and others on the board, you know, longer than I have, maybe can speak to. Is that something that our district has pursued before to grant funding?
Well, grant funding broadly, but not for that particular area.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, one more question.
Well, Jennifer?
I was gonna say the same thing as Mike. Thank you so much for putting this together. I'm sure it was, it took a long time, and I really appreciate it. It's excellent information for us as well as for the public. So I have one general question and one specific question. The general is maybe tough for you to answer, but how typical is it for staffing as, as the school year, you know, kind of gets rolling? Where you have situations where you have an acute need that you need to staff, you know, change up your staffing? Is that something that?
It's typical.
It's very typical, so every year. And then how long does it take to get everything settled? Like timeline, is it by November, everything is settled for the year? Or, and again, I know that that's tough.
I think the answer to that is it's typical. We just don't always know where the need is. Many times, it's students who are brand-new to kindergarten, who haven't been in our system. Sometimes it's students who move in from other districts who we don't have an IEP for. So pulling together the information to help that student, getting the IEP from the other district, finding out what supports they've already had, having parents come in to have the conversation about how we might help support them and give permission to do that, all of those things can take some time. And so what we try to do is, what we need to do is have a system that supports our teachers while all of that is in process. And so that's the, that's the crux of this. And I think the other piece is just, you know, where are they going to come within our system? Some years it might be second grade. Some years it might be fifth grade. And so what we really need to be able to do is learn to be more adaptable because we know the needs will be there. The question really is just where.
Okay. Thank you. And then the specific one is, so with the bar coordinator and interventionist, that's a three-year position that I'm looking here, if that's correct, for three years as part of the implementation of BAR. So my question is, interventionist, that seems like that's a need every year. So what, does that parlay into a different position after three years, or can you speak to that a little bit?
Well, the bar position, and this, Bob can speak to this also, but we asked our teachers to make commitments because with the link and the web and some of those things, you have to get the systems up and going. It's paired with an interventionist because we can't afford a full-time bar position. The intervention piece will always be a need that's there, but is there something specific else that you? So the intervention, you're correct, John, that the interventionist needs to be there. So if that position changes, part of this is also, as you get these programs up and going, you need less administrative support in some of the planning than you do at the beginning typically. So that's something that we look at every year, what are the needs?
Okay. Thank you.
Tom?
You know, Denise, I've always been intrigued by this third-party billing. And I think that, you know, for a district, it's probably something they've never really had to do. But from what we've heard from the people that did the study and also from other districts, this is becoming a huge part of trying to recoup what we spend on special ed. Do any of these positions that you've talked about in the special ed, is any of their focus going to be on that third-party billing? Or is that just something?
We've already actually reworked the third-party billing within after we had the special ed report. And so we did that with our current staff already. So these positions are not for that, but there is an increased awareness and focus on that. So yes, we have somebody working on that. Oh, sure.
I just want to add, so the Oak Park secretary, that's part special ed, part district, we do have this first year, a focus of that position is going to do some work with getting the third-party billing process and going through that process and working on it.
And maybe for the community, what we're talking about is that there are probably some services that should be paid for by a party's health insurance, some other program that they may have already paid through, through their job, and that we can then bill that insurance company for the services that we're providing and recoup those expenses so it doesn't come out of our general fund.
Correct.
Shelley?
Just one question going forward. I know this is, and I thank you for the report, too. And we talked about regularly finding out about new positions. Have you thought about, is there a way to put it in our HR report going forward if there is a new position?
There are new positions listed in there on your, there is a column over on the right-hand side for your regular report of new. Isn't that correct, Kathy?
Kathy, is that under additional assignments?
Yeah, I don't see.
Usually what you'll find is that the column on your board, your HR board report that says reason, if they're a new position, it will say new position. If it's a replacement, it'll say replacement. At the start of the year, you say a lot of, that says 17-18 staffing. Because what happens is we allocate the staffing, they use that staffing, and we do the hires, so they're just out of that allocation. But if they're new positions where we've allocated new dollars, it will say new position in that reason column.
Okay. So what does it mean? Because I looked at the personnel report, and it had additional assignments. Is that extracurricular activities or?
So what that means is, to give you an example, let's say we have an employee who is a cafeteria employee for three hours a day, but they take on a school-age care assistant position in the evening. It'll be an additional assignment for the school-age care. The co-curricular hires are in the co-curricular section separately.
Okay. Thank you.
Mike?
A question I have. I think I know the answer, but I'm thinking of our viewers and, like Tom said, for the public as well. One of the things you talked about is the funding coming out of the general fund and then occasionally, and there are here, things that are paid for out of community ed?
Correct.
Can you tell the audience the difference?
Any of the community education positions, preschool, anything that goes with programming comes out of a different fund than our regular K-12 education. K-12 is one fund, and then preschool, community education are another fund.
And isn't there a difference in terms of their budget being approved differently? In other words, 834's budget for community ed?
That's part of your overall budget when we approve the budget and look at the preliminary and report out by fund is when we do that.
Okay. And then the last one, and I'll talk about more when we talk about working groups. Talk a little bit about when it's charged to special ed, what is, what's the difference there?
Well, we are reimbursed partially for special education staff. And so we receive a number of, you know, we have a special education budget. And so we pay for as much as we can out of our special education budget. But to be able to do that, our staff have to be specially licensed. We can't pay for any special, we can't pay for any regular staff out of special education funding. It's solely for our special education needs.
Okay. And, and I will talk a little bit further, and Paula mentioned as well. The part that the state government does not pick up for special ed, the part that the federal government does not pick up for special ed is called the cross-subsidy. And that's been growing.
Correct. Right. Our cross-subsidy is at least $8 million per year.
Interesting point. I was at a conference where they mentioned this. That is almost the same amount as our renewed levy, isn't it? In other words, the part of our cross-subsidy is roughly 7 to 8 million. I think it's close to 8 million right now. Is that the total cost of our levy? I know in some districts, that's the way they view it. They say because we don't get the gap closed on cross-subsidy, it's like having another unfunded area. Makes sense? Okay. Thank you.
I just have one broad question. When I look at the funding sources, I see community ed transition, special ed, and then general fund. Do you have a rough number? If we were to add up all those general fund dollars under funding source, what would that?
About $357,000.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thanks for that report. And I guess our first action item, and I'm going to have you introduce the preliminary proposed property tax levy 2017, levy payable 2018.
Thank you. State law requires that the school board adopt a proposed property tax levy for taxes that are payable in 2018 by September 30th of 2017. This is the first step in setting the property tax levies for next year. We do this every year. This is a process that we go through. Tonight, Kristin Holheisel will be presenting the proposed preliminary levy for you. Thank you.
Good evening, Board Chair Hepner, Superintendent Pontrelli, school board members. Tonight I'll be talking about, as Superintendent Pontrelli mentioned, the preliminary levy and an overview of where our increases and decreases are as far as the preliminary goes and any significant changes that have happened since last year. I'd like to continue to point out that the preliminary levy is just a step in a many-step process. We started talking last spring about OPEB. Were we interested in levying for OPEB? I enter, and we moved on with that discussion, knowing that numbers would be entered into the summer. We enter those, that information. The Department of Education takes into account any legislative changes, anything that might affect formulas. That works its way through the summer. Now we're in, I would say, step three of a four-step process to simplify by saying, this is our overall. Are we looking at the maximum? Which what that means is, if the school board says, let's certify the maximum tonight, that means that the dollar amount won't go higher, but we're still afforded the flexibility to lower it come December with our, both our truth and taxation hearing and when we certify the final dollar amount. If the board were to choose another option other than the maximum tonight, we would lock ourselves into that particular number, and that is the highest we could go. There is no more flexibility as far as the state and numbers being calculated and coming in to date. Tonight, you would adopt the preliminary proposed 2017 Pay-18 Levy. And what this means for our taxpayers is this is actually the statement that they would receive to pay during calendar year 18. However, for us, it's for the 18-19 school year. So in conversations about how does that, what can we be looking at as far as how much percent of our revenue comes from levy, we would be talking the 18-19 school year because this is one component of all. this is one component of all of our revenue stream. And I want to say at least for the general fund, it's approximately 26 to 20% of our total revenue. Then by mid-November, our taxpayers would receive their proposed tax statements. What you do tonight will be reflected on that. Again, it's a proposed statement and there could be variables or adjustments that are made that they actually, when they actually finally see their taxes come January, that they pay in May and October. These numbers are always a little bit more challenging to read. And so I'm just going to, if you will, highlight a few of the areas that present as significant changes. There is on the left side, you can see what was pay 17 and then what is estimated pay 18. In looking, I always like to look at the bottom line. What is the impact to, you know, where we were, just like a budget? You know, you're not going line by line item with the budget. You're saying, what is the total impact? What is the impact to our taxpayers? However, I would like to walk through the steps and the categories. And please realize that there is a difference between what is represented in the first, on the left-hand side in the first two columns and what's on the right-hand side, because that was our final. That's what we did in December. It wasn't where we were at this time last year. If we were to compare that, we would, the board had opted to what I would say under levy or ultimately not do a levy for Q Comp. That dollar amount was removed. So when you get to the bottom of the page, we're not comparing, honestly, at this time, apples to apples. It's more apples to oranges because you can see as we work through this slide, you know, Q Comp is still in there. Now, will the board choose to not levy that? Well, that'll adjust your bottom line. So just recognize that when we're comparing percentage increases, we're comparing last year's December to this year's September, not last year's September to this year's September. Just for information purposes, when looking at last year's September to this year's September, we're at approximately a .38% change. So just as we work through it, realize those are the amount of adjustments that take place between now and December. Per category, the operating referendum voter approved, there is a change there of approximately That is reflective of, honestly, the formula change that our voters did approve. We had, when we went out to vote in 2013, there was an inflation factor that was put into what the voters approved because at that time, I believe it was $1,537 or thereabouts. And we've been increasing by inflation, the state imposed, or consumer price index, but the state puts it on the formula and that increases every year. And so as long as our population remains constant, no significant increase or decrease, you're going to see a change there because of the inflation factor. And I would say that's what we're recognizing.
I'm having trouble finding where we're at with the numbers. If we could say maybe what column we're on or something?
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry.
So when looking at, look at your two total columns. So if you look at 10,874,000, that's your voter approved. And then you look at the 10,600, 6.49, that was last year. So I'm going to compare the two total columns. The other columns are the categories of taxation that, like with referendum market value, the agricultural land and seasonal rec land are excluded. So if you have a cabin on Carnelian, that factor might not come into your impact on how they spread that. However, if it's a net tax capacity levy, the tax advantage goes to residential, commercial, industrial. So it's how the state gives different advantages to different categories. That's how they run their formulas. But at the end result, it's the total category.
Okay. And then the 225 that you were just talking about, where is that?
That's not there.
Okay. I'm like, I can't find a 225 anymore.
But it's the difference between?
It's the difference between the two. Yes, it's the difference between. It would be virtually impossible to read the slide if I tried to include the change category two, so.
So it's the difference in the total category?
Yes. If you take the 10.8 minus the 10.6 is your 225. And that's how I'll move through the presentation.
I was just going to say, my iPad is out of service, so I'm trying to find it on my phone.
Which makes it even harder to read.
I know.
And again, I'm just going to go through and kind of highlight the big nuances. Equity, that is trying to level out, there's two categories. There's both rural and metro. We fall into the metro. And it's trying to kind of balance out what school districts receive as far as their referendum and their tax base, if you will. Some school districts are blessed with different property that is more favorable to your residents, more commercial-based. And so the equity revenue tries to balance that out between all metro school districts or all rural school districts. This is a levy category that, you know, in considering, do you under levy, that I would recommend not, because some of these formulas, if you do that, we lose aid. So when looking at categories, there might be some that might seem more favorable, but we don't necessarily want to go there because it might have a negative consequence that we're not looking at on this sheet. Then prior year's adjustments. What happens here is in the event our estimates are off, different things happen, honestly, throughout, people have applied for credits that we didn't expect, those sorts of things, that's accounted for and that's put into an adjustment category. So even on enrollment, we're looking at three years of estimates. If we're off, it tends, it catches itself up from one of those years and so you always have adjustments as you move forward. Student achievement has gone away. That was a levy that was imposed by the legislature and it was actually to help subsidize what they gave us in gen ed revenue and that sunsetted and so that is gone and that is an actual credit to us. And the same with operating capital, we actually have a credit to us. But I'd like to point out that the budget for operating capital doesn't change significantly. We're just going to get more in aid. So we approximately have a $2 million op cap budget. This is, again, just what we're collecting from the local taxpayers. Then Q Comp, which I identified, that looks, you know, you're looking at approximately a $750,000 increase. Again, the board has chosen the last two years to under levy that to zero. I would imagine that would look the same. If the board directs me otherwise, then that we would remove it. Otherwise, that's open for conversation.
Has that been decided in the past?
Just because that it's, that's asking more money from, it's, I'm going to defer to one of my board members that, or the superintendent who's been involved with the Q Comp conversation.
So Sarah, I think you stated it exactly right, is that we have the opportunity, we could levy, many districts do, to support the Q Comp program, but then that raises taxes. And so in the past, the decision's been not to do that.
Okay. Sarah, I think it might.
Mike?
I think it might be similar to our discussion at OPEB.
Yeah.
That we could have picked it up that way, chose not to.
Got it.
It would be the same thing with Q Comp.
Okay.
And we never have. I mean, it's always been, we've taken the state money, but we've never taxed our local citizens for that.
So then I'd like to draw, we're going to move all the way down and I'd actually like to draw your attention to the subtotal line, where you see the 9.285 in bold, it's the second number up compared to the 8.523. That difference is approximately $762,000. Again, that's probably about your Q Comp area. So once removed, that would look different.
Okay.
Community service, we are up approximately $7,500. I understand that that is a lot of money, but in the scheme of multi-millions of dollars where I would consider us static for community ed. And then our debt service levies, this category also comes down to kind of a prior period adjustment, if you will. If you notice, the debt service voter approved has held flat, both in debt service voter approved and debt service other were relatively stagnant, where the difference comes in is your debt excess. And how that works is the state collects 105% of your principal and interest payments to allow for different conditions, whether it be interest, interest expenses, I'm trying Delinquent taxes, unforeseen issues that arise during the current fiscal year. So they collect more than they need to allow for that. When they, when you come to fruition with your books and you have gotten through that particular fiscal year and they realize it's not needed, then they allow you to use it as a negative offset for your taxpayers. We are not in that year for, we're not there for our taxpayers. Now again, I don't know, that is a calculation that could come into adjustment, but right now, that is where your variation comes into play, is that debt, that extra 5% that we collected above and beyond our principal and interest payments. And then the OPEB debt service is, is actually below where it was last year, but again, you're looking at about $57,000. And again, in the scheme of it all, it's a significant dollar amount. It's not a significant dollar amount when considering the impact of a multimillion-dollar So when looking at, again, the bottom line and looking at the total column, you can see that this year's preliminary levy is 38 million, or at least right now, 38,897 dollars, excuse me, 38,897,659.91. Compared to last year's final of the 37.269, we would be up 4.36%. That would be our change when looking at last year's final compared to this year's preliminary. If you were to take Q Comp out of the mix right away, we're looking at a 2.37% change. What does that mean? And typically, I would provide at this time a slide that shows what is the tax impact? What does that mean to our taxpayers? And the reason why I am not providing that slide is Washington County's numbers, they said will be updated. So I didn't want to provide a slide that I knew sounded as though it wouldn't be entirely exact and then have some confusion over why that, that information was provided at that time. But I will say this, if all property values were to hold, you have a $300,000 house and you stay, there's no valuation increase from the county and you stay at a $300,000 house. If Q Comp were to stay in, so the highest levy we could do, you are essentially looking at a flat school tax, meaning you, I think you'd actually see a reduction of a dollar and change. If you were to remain at the, every, all things remain static for all property valuations, if you were to take Q Comp out and you had a $250,000 house, you'd actually see a $20 Now where it gets into an area that we don't control is market valuation. And what is the county saying? The preliminary numbers say new construction is 1.5% to the base. Property valuation is another 4.9. What does all of that mean? And again, then it comes down to the winners and losers. If some, if your neighbor's valuation went up 15%, they're probably going to see an increase in their school taxes because it all comes down to one lump sum that we're asking for and they have more of the lion's share than the other. Tonight, and we can, we'll have certainly more detail as we get closer to December for that. Tonight, I would ask that you adopt the maximum, again, to allow that flexibility. This isn't the final. That action will be taken in December. And then it's, and then it's the consideration of, is it the dollars that, you know, to our open forum speaker, is it the dollars that we're looking to hold stagnant? Is it people's taxes that we're looking to hold stagnant as much as we, you know, don't have control over valuation? Kind of what is the goal of the board as we move forward? So, questions?
Well, I haven't heard anybody on the board talk about wanting the Q Comp increase. So I'm not thinking anybody's interested in pulling that, you know, I mean, keeping that in there. So if we pull that out, is the maximum 2.37 then? Is that when you say?
Yeah, that would be where it is today. Again, I would still recommend you do the maximum to allow other adjustments to take place, but it would be 2.37, all other numbers staying the same.
Right. Okay. Paul?
I have a few questions, so please bear with me because I, I don't know if I'm going to be articulating them as clearly as I should. So back in 2009, when then Governor Palenti had withheld state funding, is the debt service levy, when they take 105%, is that a similar parallel in terms of them taking more than what they actually, if they're taking 105%, then do we subsidize and fill in that gap, so to speak, until they kind of do their math and then they?
Our taxpayers do. I mean, ultimately, we get it back because again, we levy for 100% of our debt.
Right.
We're guaranteed unless we refinance or restructure our debt, that's what our debt payment is going to be and that's why you see those numbers hold across. With that additional 5%, again, it allows for the nuances where if you do have someone who's delinquent or whatever, then the rest of our taxpayers have covered, you know, those delinquencies or those special events that have happened. But in the event they don't, then that's when we get the adjustment in future years to our bottom-line taxpayers.
Okay, okay. And then could you help me understand, when you had talked about the, if we don't levy for a certain amount, it can have a negative adverse effect on the formula?
Mm-hmm.
And just some of the methodology behind that? Is that a state? Is that something that the legislature mandates or?
It's truly based, back to the line items. It truly is based on each line item you're talking about. If we chose to under levy unemployment insurance, it would be fine. That was an expense out of our pocket. We're looking to recover that expense and that wouldn't have an impact on aid. However, you get into other categories. And we've done that with alternative facilities or the long-term facilities. That's what we've used before because that is solely internal. As soon as you start getting into formulas that are driven like an equity formula that are considering your neighbors, the metro, the rural, the aid versus the levy, the tiers, when you start getting to those, I would be very cautious because that's when you start playing with, if you're going to under levy, do you run the risk of also losing aid because of it?
Okay, all right. Chair, I had two more questions, but I can yield if others have.
Jennifer?
Okay, so from a first-timer perspective here, I was concerned when I saw the increase and I guess, I guess I'm wondering, you know, from a historical perspective, and I don't know who would answer this question, but is this kind of typical that we, because I do see there are unknowns here. So I understand that you want that kind of be able to have a conversation. We're not voting on it right now at this point. So I do understand that. But I guess historically, have we always, is this kind of the manner in which we've had this discussion, that we have kind of asked for the maximum at this point in the game, knowing that, because for me, I look at this from a, you know, wanting to be as conservative as possible. So it scares me a little bit, I'll be honest. So I guess I'm wondering historically, is this kind of the way we've handled the situation? Then we get the numbers from the county and then we can have, and then you take the Q Comp out if we do that? And then we can have a much more educated and pared-down final number? So is that?
Yes.
Process-wise, kind of what we've done?
Yes.
Okay. And we feel that that's worked? It's, you know, worked from a board level?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, from my perspective, this is just the process every community goes through is, you know, we're required to submit this, knowing that you can't go higher once you submit it. You can always go lower. That comes in December to provide the staff the flexibility to come in with a budget, knowing we want to try to keep it as, you know, taxpayer-friendly as possible. We've always approved the maximum, knowing We've always approved the maximum, knowing that it'll get readjusted. I mean, for the community, I think it's important to know that Washington County set their levy at 6.9%, so 2.37, you know, that's pretty good. I hope we can do better, but that's what we ultimately find out in December, so.
Mike?
Well, Tom, I can't think of situations where we've come in, and I think you've been a real champion. Sometimes, here's one of the difficulties you run into. If you go higher, say 4.3 or something like that, taxpayers are going to get a statement in November reflecting that, correct? So even if you go down in December, that's a little bit of shock, because it's not just school tax they're going to be looking at, it's collectively. Again, these are at random, which I just clipped out of the Gazette, and I think Stillwater went to 2.3, Bayport went to 4%. So I'm saying, there's others out there. I didn't come across Washington County, but I believe what you said. So I'm saying, boy, there's a little balance here, because, one, I kind of lean where George was talking about, if we can get it down a little bit, but at the same time, I do, I'm sensitive to your argument, preserve some flexibility. So wherever that magic point is, that's what we got to determine tonight.
Yes?
Is there any reason why, if we're not going to be including, I keep saying OPEB, QComp, why can't we just take it out right now? Just be done with it?
At that time, you would set a dollar amount, which then eliminates the flexibility with all of the other levies. If we were to subtract from the 38,897, and we were to subtract the 744, we've now chosen a dollar amount.
Okay.
And that's what, why, the disadvantage to doing that, because now all the other levies need to, there might have been different things, different adjustments going on that don't happen, because we've now chosen a dollar amount that we can't go over.
So can I ask a follow-up?
Yes, Sarah.
So the follow-up question then would be, when do we decide then on whether to levy for the QComp? If we don't take it out now, when would we take it out?
The official action would be in December.
In December, okay, that's my thought.
Paula, did you have more?
Oh, please. So the other, see, one of the other questions I had for you, and then I have actually one for board members who were here in 2013, but the one, when you had talked about, let's see if I can find it, sorry. I guess just understanding in layman's terms for me, what are the isolated factors that we simply do not have control over? So in addition to evaluation of property, obviously, but are there other things that, I'm just thinking of, you know, because of the, I hear you say that for us, there was something that it's actually reflective of the '18, '19 school year.
That would be our budget year, of which we would receive this money.
Right, right. And presumably, things could happen at a legislative level then that impact. So I guess that was just my question, trying to win out down. What are other outside factors beyond our locus of control that might impact our discussion moving forward or in December?
That's good, because, you know, I give those four reasons on my December PowerPoint every time, and now I'm trying to recall. So it's market value, it's state credits, if there's a credit that's involved, classification. So if you go from, if you have ag property, that's now residential, you change your class rate.
Okay.
And I'm struggling to recall the third, or fourth.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I think something you talked about in discussion right now, and I want to make sure I say this accurately, this doesn't account for increased property values in '834, such as there's been an awful lot of building that I observe, and so that's going to be a little bit of cushion collectively?
Well, and so that's why, again, and I wish I would have had the slide, but my reservation was the information, that's where you get into the difference between the dollar amount collected comparing to prior year and what the actual tax impact is. Because when your tax base or market value base, when that grows, again, that, your divisor changes. And so people see, the larger the base, assuming you hold, the less you pay. And that's why I'm saying, if all things remain static with that tax base growth, our taxpayers would see a decrease, even with the dollar amount being greater. Now where the challenge comes in is each individual's home valuation and what happened there, because, you know, again, that's an area we don't control, but overall, that tax base growth helps with what we're doing when you look at it in a static environment.
Yeah. So all that new building potentially could help the individuals, taxpayers?
Yes, it could.
Yeah.
Do you have another one?
Yes, please, for the board. So in 2013, I heard you say at the time, that current board, we levied, and I think there's only three people on the, up here that were currently in that board, so I would really like to just hear some of the, because I, you said, did they adjust it or they raised inflation? Can you, or they went for a?
The question that was on the ballot was an operating referendum question, and that question was a dollar amount and then citing an inflation factor. So you were approving a dollar amount for that year and then approving the inflation factor beyond that?
Got it, got it. Okay, thank you. All right, that makes more sense, I guess. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah. And George, I don't mean to put you on the spot. Originally, you said, what happens with a 2.37%? Is there a different percentage point in there that we could play with and that wouldn't be arbitrary, but would still give the administration the flexibility or some maneuverability in That's really a board issue.
I think there's a lot of numbers you could play with, but I think your answer on the QComp to somebody here, we're locked into keeping that QComp in there? Is that kind of what you're saying at this point? We want to keep that in there?
In absence of saying the maximum, which establishes no dollar amount, even though you've seen it.
Yep.
As soon as you say something is gone, you now establish a firm dollar amount, which then could alter any adjustments that are still flowing through from the Department of Education, or, I mean, even if there's an error on the sheet, and it might be nominal, I know we had talked last year, various levies that might be off $20,000 or something happened in a different district that adjusted the state, it could subject you to losing that flexibility.
Okay, so, just following up that thinking, so if you go to some other figure than a 2.37, say you said, okay, let's cut it in half.
Well, just wait, 2.37 is without the QComp.
Yes.
You're talking 4.36, I think.
Difference, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Is what I was talking about. Like, for example, if you got to 4.36 and you subtract, subtract, you end up, it'd be that difference if you, say you cut it in half, or does that still freeze the dollar amount?
Freezes the dollar amount.
Okay. So it's either one or the other.
It's either we don't identify a dollar amount, or we do.
Okay, I understand.
And, I'm sorry, if we do, can it be less than that?
Yes, it can never be after today, it can never be greater than.
Okay. I think where I'm at, and it sounds like others are, is that we won't support a maximum when it comes down to it, that we'll want it lower than that, so.
But at this time, and to Mike's point earlier, it's going to look exaggerated when people get their statements in December, but I guess that's just on us to make sure that people know that we're not going to that full.
I just don't want to increase their heart rate in the middle.
Well, it's some good sometimes to have that heart rate move up a little bit.
It depends on you or me.
Can I just jump in?
Yes, go ahead.
So at what point do we know what the impact will be in terms of, this does not have, it doesn't have the market increase, the value of the total market in here yet? When will we have that information, so we'll know what the actual impact is on the community? You know what I'm saying?
Not sure I do.
Before we get to the December meeting, this is what we're asking for, but we don't know yet what the impact of it on each individual house or property will be.
We will never know the impact on each individual house. Well, we know that, again, it comes, it.
I mean, you know, for the standard $150,000, $300,000 home or something.
If you had a $250,000 house and you continue to have a $250,000 house, this is what that means.
Right.
Well, again, we're showing no increase, regardless of what you choose today on any of our values. So then it truly comes down to that adjustment.
Yeah.
Once the county releases, and honestly, probably I would give the state about another three weeks.
Okay.
To try to firm this up a little bit, we're going to have a really good idea of what it looks like.
What the impact will be. Okay, that's good. And then I did have another question, a little bit more on the QComp. So we get money from the state to cover the cost to implement the QComp program, right?
Correct.
So this, how would this amount of money compare to what we get from the state? Or why would anybody choose to levy for it? If, I mean, is it just, I mean, if you're getting money from the state to cover the cost of QComp, is this just like an extra bonus?
It's a flat dollar amount, so the amount available between aid and levy is $260 per pupil.
Okay.
That's flat.
Okay.
A piece of that, 100 and, I think it's 69, 79, it's adjusted, is aid. That's what we, that's what we as a district receive.
Okay.
The remainder is levy of the two, so they split the 260 between aid and levy. For various reasons, districts individually choose either, you know, what our program would look like under the full sum versus what the program or the development looks like under just the aid piece. We've chosen just the aid piece in consideration of what the levy piece does to our taxpayers. We've chosen a different balance, if you will, than what others have for.
So just to be clear, if we were to levy for this QComp piece, that would go directly to our teachers who are participating in the QComp program? Whoever qualifies for it, right? It would be in addition to what they already are getting through the program?
It's usually a combination. Some can go for the teacher stipend for participation. Sometimes, when you look at districts throughout the metro area, it might look, they might have literacy coaches, there might be some other support and professional development for teachers. So it really goes back to your QComp plan that you submit to the state, and the state has requirements, and then there's also flexibility. And there's actually been more flexibility in the last few years about what those programs look like. So it's a combination.
I think the idea, Sarah, is that you can, you get an amount of money, and you can develop the program, not let's develop the program and then how much money are we going to need to support that for years. We didn't do QComp because the person who was the head of the teachers said, well, we're not doing it unless we get both the local money and the state money. And the board wasn't willing to assess the taxpayers for the local money. So it didn't go anywhere until just recently. Yes, Paula?
To your point, George, in the past, have we communicated exactly that, what you had said, that it's on us to communicate, so that someone's not hearing this and walking away saying, well, they approve the maximum, and this is why my taxes are going up? That we communicate kind of the process, the reasoning why, the, some of the legal mandates, and the rationale, just so that the taxpayers know? Because, I mean, I think I'm speaking for everyone, but I only speak for myself, no one wants to raise taxes. But it could be perceived, to the speaker's earlier point, that, so you're approving the maximum. I think just if we communicate and are really forthcoming in that, just to give some rationale, is that something that we've done in the past? I can't remember last year, if you can refresh my memory, I can't remember if we did that, but, because I know this is something we do every year, but that's just a suggestion, perhaps, that's something.
Well, I think other than putting something on the, well, I'm sure it's on the, you know, front of the website when people click on it, but I don't know how much beyond that. I'm sure the Gazette covers it, or, you know, a local paper would cover it, but I don't know if beyond that, if we do or not.
I think it would be awesome to have some presentation, seminar, some sort of a training, an event where we invite the community to have you share your wisdom with us, because this is really complicated.
It is very complicated.
And a lot of people get confused, it's hard to figure out, both the property tax piece and the school funding piece is very complex, and so I think it's easy for us to understand why it's, you know, why people get confused about how this works, so.
Yes, Jennifer?
A little bit to that point, I think that, you know, we pay attention to these things, and many people do, but, you know, when I'm in the grocery store, I'm going to hear, what are you doing? You're increasing, you're suggesting an increase, you just closed three schools. I thought you closed three schools to save money. So I'm going to be honest, I'm going to hear it, I think we'll all hear that. So, you know, I guess at this point, I'd love to, you know, if you could help us, help the public, because I do believe that the questions, I know I'm going to hear it, I know I'll hear it a lot, and that's okay. And I guess I'd love to be able to put some rationale behind that.
Sure. A few thoughts. The first is, you know, back to stating, and when I do, when I do the presentation, the truth in taxation presentation in December, that includes the budget. Part of the requirements of a truth in taxation is to include certain elements of your budget, because there is obviously a connection between what you collect and what you have the ability to spend. Apart from that is then the recognition of, okay, here is, in isolation, one component, which actually may or may not be part of our budget. I look at, for example, even the easy one, the intermediate ones, safe school, intermediate, or even safe schools. We're levying for 916. It's not our budget, but we're helping our partnership receive the money to help with their program. But when looking at it, just, again, very generically speaking, of all the revenue we collect, we're looking at, you know, that slice of the pie, just in the general fund, like I say, 26 to 28%. So it's not the overall scheme. Now you move forward, and you start talking about individual categories, and they may go to specific things, and they may not. Operating capital is very restrictive. Obviously, the voter-approved is not. But when taking that component and then moving it on and saying, this is what we're going to collect, yes, now it becomes part of the budget. But then it comes down to the question, and it's the question for the board. Are we looking at the impact to the taxpayers as far as what it means when they pay their property taxes? Or are we looking at a bottom-line number that shows relatively no increase or decrease? Because those are two very different conversations. And at least since I've been with Stillwater, the conversation has centered around, what is the property tax impact to our voters, not the increase or decrease in the bottom line? And again, that's a discussion for the board to have, but it depends on how you want to view it, quite honestly. Because, again, if you're saying it's no impact, yes, the dollar amount, it's an increase, but it doesn't, because of all of these other factors, it may not have an increase to you. Is that an acceptable approach if it helps, you know, fund our schools?
I think in addition to that, what might be helpful is to help folks remember that the savings from the school consolidation, that money is used for giving, you know, we talked about the social-emotional needs of our kids and mental health needs and increasing that, there's support for that. Some of that went to the middle-school model, which is similarly the same thing around teaming and social-emotional support for our kids in the high-school model. So those savings are reinvested into our kids. And then also talked about, you know, when you talk about needs and cost of a school district earlier tonight, we talked about that cross-subsidy is climbing every year for us as a school district. And you can imagine, if we had, to Mike's point, $8 million more a year, that wouldn't really solve a lot of our problems. So some of those reasons, I think, can help people see, all right, how did we use this money wisely? And then why is it still an issue? Because our costs are still going up.
Okay, thank you.
Mike?
It seems to me, you know, hearing where everybody's at and what's being talked about. It seems to me, you know, hearing where everybody's at and what's being talked about, the administration is saying 4.36. And I think Shelley phrased it best when she said, you know, if this wasn't the preliminary, where I think I heard most people are going to be closer to 2.37.
That would be the percentage change in the dollar amount.
Yeah.
Yes.
And, but what, because this is a preliminary step, what the administration has the opportunity to do or board members do is to measure those variables in about two and a half months.
Yes.
See where have we come at that point. And, and our job really is to sell that message, because I think, as I listened tonight, I think that's where most board members are. And, and if we're talking about an increase, I think everybody here pretty much is comfortable with 2.37. But realizing that tonight is a temporary step or a preliminary step.
So you're ready to make a motion?
Well, I'm tossing that one out.
I'll make a motion that we certify the maximum. That's second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye? Pose? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second action item is the, what do we even call it? Revised school board meeting calendar for remainder of 2017. I think board members have that available. And I think what it does is move our meetings to business meetings and they move them to city hall. I don't think any of the dates are changed and they're all starting at six o'clock. So the revised meeting schedule is down here at six and they're business meetings.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised meeting schedule.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on that? Paula?
So I know, maybe this is further discussion that we'll be having with Mary about then what learning sessions, because going to this format, format, with all of them being business meetings, we've in essence eliminated our work sessions or learning sessions.
Well, I think we've taken them off our meeting calendar. I don't, I think the idea is that we are going to have them, we just aren't doing them as Thursday night meetings.
Correct, okay, okay. And then I know we had, we've had numerous discussions about potentially moving our, our meetings to a different location. Is that something that we would, do you anticipate that's something we would talk about at the organizational meeting or is that?
That's what I anticipate.
Okay, okay, I was just curious. Thank you.
Okay, we good to vote? All those in favor of the revised meeting calendar, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Pose? Thank you. And we're on to board reports. Board chair report, I would just like to read a response. We did have an open forum speaker a while ago that brought up an issue and I'd like to speak to that this way. At the August 10th, 2017 board meeting, board members held a discussion concerning a site for a bus terminal facility. The bond approved by citizens allowed $3.5 million to be allocated toward the purchase of a bus terminal facility. The board approved enclosed session as allowed by state statute, the purchase price for a turnkey facility in the southern half of the district. I noted that this turnkey facility could be paid for by the bond allocated, $3.5 million approved by citizens, 1.3 million in the district capital fund from the sale of the former Washington School and $2 million from savings by not paying the next 10 years of lease payments for the current site. For I made this suggestion with my research supports, I was asked at the next open forum meeting to resign from the school board. In my research leading up to our board discussion, I phoned Eric Johnson, an administrator in my town of Oak Park Heights, and asked if there was any background information on the current bus site, since environmental questions had been raised about this site. He said he would look into the property material and get back to me. He later sent me reports related to the current bus site. I shared this material with my fellow board members. In reading through the material Mr. Johnson sent, I became alarmed at some of the information contained within the reports, which I clearly stated were from 1995. As a stage four cancer survivor myself, I noted especially some written material that said soil sample concentrations exceeded the acceptable target cancer risk level at numerous locations within the site boundaries. I was accused by the open forum speaker of fear mongering by bringing this material to our discussion. In fact, I don't believe I would have done my due diligence if I knew about this material in the report and failed to call attention to it. The September 13th, 2017 review of environmental reports and MPCA files done by Field Environmental Consulting chose to quote from the same report I quoted. They noted that data indicates that the estimated cancer risk exceeds targets at numerous locations for unrestricted and recreational land use. Field Environmental Consulting no doubt felt they were also doing their due diligence by highlighting this information. It was also said by the speaker that I demanded an immediate vote on the southern property on August 10th. In the 10 years I've been on the school board, no board members, including me, have ever demanded an immediate vote. The board members I have served with are thoughtful and courageous citizens and cannot be bullied into immediate votes if they aren't ready to vote. The truth is that board members took a vote to table a decision on the bus terminal location. The vote was six to one, the issue was tabled and the majority ruled as it should. I do want to thank the open forum speaker for reminding board members that we have a moral and ethical responsibility to function impartially to ensure the greatest good to the greatest number at all times. With over 60,000 district residents to whom we are accountable, our responsibility is always to ensure the greatest good to the greatest number, and I intend to continue to do just that until I decide to leave the school board. And that's my board chair report. Are there any board member reports?
I don't have anything.
Mike?
I've, I've got a couple, as usual.
Have my time, Mike.
Thank you, I'll need it. First of all, I want to talk about that the Minnesota School Boards Association, which is called MSBA, and put on some tours where they go around the whole state of Minnesota, I'm of Wisconsin. I was going to say, why not? It almost slipped. But anyway, they go around probably to about a half a dozen, dozen schools and they're getting input for that organization's legislative platform. And one of those, they held recently in St. Paul, and I attended that. There were probably about six legislators there, there were probably about 10 board members, and then a couple of staff members from MSBA. And Paula will talk about in a few minutes, she attended the one the next night, so her and I went to separate ones. At, at that point, what I was able to do is go to that meeting, talk to each one of our legislators, and, and they also asked us, each of the board members who were there, to express our concern for one issue. And the issue that I talked about was special education cross subsidy. And Denise and her staff and Paula were able to share with me what the discrepancy in payment. And when I talk cross subsidy, that's the amount that the federal government does not pick up, that the states do not pick up. And so what ends up is that we use special ed money, but what's not covered has to come from the general fund. And by law, you have to furnish that to special ed kids, because that's part of their IEPs. What's happened to that fund since 2011, and this is what I talked about that night, to 2015, in 2011, the part that was unfunded was 7.46 percent, roughly about $4.2 million. Okay, what happened 2015, 16, five years later? The amount or the percent that had to come out of the general fund was 12.67 percent. The amount in dollars, and that's what I was asking Kristin earlier, it's 7.99300,000. So it's a huge amount of money. That's what I spoke to. And, and realize, this is just a preliminary step, there's a delegate assembly that's held December 1st and 2nd for MSBA, they elect delegates, and they will decide what their platform's going to be. What they did at each of the sites that they went to, in addition to having us talk about one issue that we were concerned about, they also gave you a card and asked you to select your top three. And so they, I, I like how they call this, this, they call this a casual survey, because it's not scientific, it's who showed up. And their top three items in order were special education cross subsidy, the second one was the Teacher Retirement Association, the pension fund. That's a big issue and there's a, a one that's coming up there. And then the third one in priority order was basic funding formula increase, one more percent be added to the formula. So those were the top three events. And, and I thought it was a very, very interesting night, another chance to talk to legislators. But one of the sides of this is I came across a posting by people from Hopkins, that there was going to be a forum or a presentation in Hopkins Tuesday of this week. And the topic of that was, I've got lots of paper here, it was going to be a presentation pretty much by the guru of school finance in education, and that's Tom Melcher. And Tom was presenting. So I went to that forum and Tom entitled it, Making Sense of Public Education Funding. And if you're interested, he presented for about an hour and a half, it's extremely well done. They said that they would post it on the Hopkins site, both his PowerPoint and then a video of his presentation. So if you're interested in knowing more about school finance, take a look at that. That was very valuable. I recommend anybody, if you're having trouble with the website, finding it, let me know and I'll send it to you. Secondly, what was very interesting, that particular meeting that night was attended by a consortium of four schools. And it was Wayzata, Hopkins, Orno, and Robbinsdale. And who was there chiefly that night were parents. They were the largest percentage of people. And, and what I've done, and board members will see that in their packets, is I put copies of what a lot of those individual school coalitions have developed. And they're kind of an arm of the district administration and board members, and, but they've putting together, I think, some really leading actions in terms of legislating for education. And in fact, what Hopkins calls themselves is the LAC, which stands for Legislative Action Coalition. And so I just hold this out as kind of an exemplary organization and that personally, I think we ought to try to, to emulate. So those were the, the two big things I went to. The third is that last Friday, I, I did go to a C meeting, which is Schools for Equity in Education. I listened to Bill Morris present again. What was different is that when Denise and Bob and I and others heard Bill Morris present at AMSD, it was for AMSD schools, that's who they surveyed. When I went and he presented to C schools, it was for the whole state of Minnesota. And so what I will do, I, I didn't finish in time for this, is to point out some differences in the findings with the two presentations, because they were, to my way of thinking, significantly different. And then the other presenter at that organization was from MDE and he talked about the state plan that's going to be submitted to the federal government. The other thing I would mention is, and board members know this because I sent a copy to them, is C, very much like MSBA, will develop a platform and they are holding a regional C platform meeting for our district and many others in our region. So board members may want to consider attending that. Okay, thank you.
Shelley?
I have nothing.
Paula?
So just to piggyback on a little bit what Mike said, so Wednesday night, I attended the, the MSBA advocacy tour. And how we started out is people went around and introduced themselves and stated the top two concerns, one or two top, two concerns that they had about their districts. And what Mike said is absolutely right, the cross subsidy was by far the consensus in the room from board members of the number one concern. Other things that came up were very similar to issues that we're facing, the continuous cuts of, of programming because of lack of stable funding from, from our state. So then they went around and they asked the elected officials who were in the room, the, the legislators, the senators and representatives who were there, what their predictions might be for the next biennium. And they talked about, one senator in particular talked about how healthcare, in his opinion, would likely dominate the, the next bonding, well, next year's the bonding year, but when we go into the next funding year, that schools may not see the money that we are asking for, because healthcare will remain a priority for, for the legislature. That was, that was his prediction. So all that to say is, we had a really robust conversation about how our school is going to continue serving the needs of students when we simply do not have the funds. And people in the room were very aware of what our district has gone through, many of them have gone through the same thing. And we are really, the consensus was, we are forced in a no win situation because of the lack of funding and just how do we, how do we overcome that? What can we do to advocate? And when it's not even keeping up with inflation, our students are losing. And so what do we do to change that? So that was a philosophical debate that we, a conversation that we had had. So that was MSBA. I also attended the, the night of the Spanish immersion open house, which was amazing and just hearing families talk about the richness. And Jen and I talked to one family in particular and just the, seeing in his eyes and hearing in his voice, the gift that his daughter was now going to be able to have when they go back to his country of origin, which is Spanish speaking, and just the ability for his daughter to be able to communicate with her grandparents and relatives in that country. It was really powerful, so I'm glad that I could attend that. And, oh, Reimagine Minnesota, I know many of us here participated in one of those world cafes. Information will be coming, they are, leadership is going to be meeting, I believe, at AMSD next week. And so the main architects behind that will be convening and so more information will be coming in terms of what next steps are, that, how that might start to take shape in terms of what it means for action steps going forward.
Tom?
Nothing.
Jennifer?
Two quick things. One, I had a conversation with someone with regards to the minutes in, in the, our reports. And, you know, as clerk, we, I get a copy and I go through it and, and then they're obviously voted on. The one thing I learned this week is that, and I think it's relevant for, for everyone, I didn't know it, is that when, when a person comes in and has something to say, the Barb goes and uses just the written verbiage that, that the speaker writes down as their topic. So I thought that was informative and because, to be honest, I didn't, I didn't know that either. So I think just, that's the thing I learned about that. And then I also wanted to comment about that night, the span, that night with the dual immersion program and the same gentleman that I talked to, he, I, I spoke some just hideous Spanish to him and, and just really, really bad. And he's, he was from El Salvador and he said, I said, you know, how do you feel about this? And he said, how do I feel about it? He said, I'm sitting here in my, in my new country, teaching my child, you know, to speak English and, and Spanish and, and we're, we're all together. And he said, and we're all speaking our native language, but we're all Americans, there, there simply isn't anything better. And I was so moved by it and it doesn't take me much to cry. So of course I started crying. And then I said I could just hug you and, and he, what does he do? He gets up and gives me a big old bear hug. And if that doesn't- And if that doesn't set a tone for a positive future for that program and the smiles in those children's eyes, I, I was so moved by it. It was a wonderful experience and I'm thankful for it. So that's all I have.
Okay, Sarah, you said nothing?
No.
You have, board members, you have EMI minutes. I was in Montana during our last meeting, but briefly, these are what was sent to me. And I do want to point out one thing, EMI's been in existence for about 20 years or so. And the board welcomed for the first time two student representatives to the board, a student from White Bear Lake and a student from Forest Lake. And as with our student representatives here, hopefully they'll bring a perspective to our board discussions. Working group reports, any of those moving forward? Yep?
George, one last thing I probably was remiss mentioning, but I attended Century College, we should recognize they just celebrated 50 years.
Formerly Lakewood and now Century.
Yes. And so it was a big event that was well attended and I happened to get over there. But if you know people from Century College, please share, because it is a wild time for them.
The only quick thing with policy is that we are, we had, we're still working on the timeline and our group is, is going to just really kick out, once we get the timeline set up, we're going to start just kicking them out. And I know I say this, it's becoming a broken record, but it is going to happen, so.
Looking forward to it. Could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
Thank you. We're adjourned.